Good afternoon. I am going to call to order this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, June 5, 2019. My name is Andrea Jenkins. I am the Chair of this committee and with me at the dais today are Council members Palmasano, Goodman, Ellison, Schrader, Council President Bender, Council Member Fletcher, Reich, and Gordon. Let the record reflect that we do have a corner. On the agenda today, we have one discussion item and reports of committees. And we'll begin with our discussion item, which is the 2019 report from the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. That presentation will be introduced by our City Clerk, Casey Carl. Good afternoon, Mr. Carl.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. May it please the committee, I'm here to introduce the final report from the city's local Board of Appeal and Equalization. The 2019 local board was established pursuant to Resolution 62, which is adopted on March 1st. Its members included this year Patricia Warner, Jeff Larson, Paul Crawford, Michael Tinker, Neil Anderson, and Fay Bland. The Board convened on April 23rd and Ms. Warner was elected Chair. The Board's proceedings were included in your briefing materials. They are contained in the Clerk file number 2019-00005. As reflected in the request for committee action, Minneapolis received a total of 1,766 applications for appeal hearings this year. Staff has included a chart in your briefing materials that shows that this year's filings represented the highest number of applications received since 2010. In fact, over the past nine years, the city has experienced a growth rate of more than 245% in the number of applications received. Despite this incredible increase in volume, of those 1,766 applications filed this year, only 17 actually carried forward and resulted in an appeal before the Board. So that equates to less than 1% of the total volume of applications that were received resulting in hearings. In real numbers, that means that in the nine-year period from 2010 to 2019, the city of Minneapolis forwards between 0 and 34 appeals to the county Board level. All of the rest are successfully resolved at the local level, either by the assessor's office directly or through our local Board of Appeal and Equalization. The number of applications this year, while record-setting, does not reflect the total volume of inquiries that are handled by the assessor's office. And just this year, the assessor's office received in excess of 5,000 inquiries and was successful at resolving almost 67% of those through consultation with property owners, which minimized the number of applications that actually went forward then for appeal hearings. I shared these statistics to highlight three important points about our process. First, the appeals process, as established under state law, provides three levels in order to maximize the opportunity for all property owners to address any grievances they might have in the classification or valuation process of their property. Starting, of course, first, at the local level, it moves on then to the county level, and finally then to the state level. The local and county levels are free to property owners. So our local Board is the entry point in a three-tiered system designed to give property owners as much flexibility as possible in achieving parity in the classification and market valuation of their properties within the parameters of state law. As a consequence, it's important that our process be fair, accessible, and transparent. Secondly, it is important that our assessor's office make every effort to resolve disputes in property classification or valuation to ensure fairness across the Board and how all of the properties in the city are classified and valued, again, within the confines of state law. That our assessor's office is successful year after year in resolving and reaching concurrences with the vast majority of property owners demonstrates, first, their high standards and commitment to ensuring a fair and accurate assessment process; and, second, their willingness to engage with property owners to ensure that any concerns are addressed and can be resolved at the local level so that, again, the vast majority of those cases don't need to escalate either to Hennepin County or to the state tax court. And that's a benefit both to the city and to our property owners. And finally, I would point out that the year-after-year process improvements that we've made, led by the assessor's office, have helped to bring greater visibility to the appeals process, thereby ensuring that the entire team is available to the community. Ms. Monquist will highlight some of those process improvements in her presentations, so I'll save that for her. However, as the city officer who is charged, the city clerk was supporting the local Board, I can attest that each year, we put considerable energy into evaluating improvements to drive greater awareness, greater access, and transparency, and that those efforts are the result of the professional cadre of assessors who take great pride in their work. As I mentioned, Deputy City Assessor Rebecca Monquist is here to present the report from the 2019 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. Your City Assessor, Patrick Todd, and I are also available to answer any questions following her presentation. You'll note that staff has presented a series of recommended actions on the agenda today that includes a draft resolution for your consideration, which, if approved, would confirm the recommended actions submitted to you by the local Board to equalize all of the assessed valuations of real and personal property across the city, and also direct the city assessor to file the final adopted assessment rolls with both Hennepin County and the State Department of Revenue with requests that they take final lawful action to give effect to the same. And with that, I'll ask Deputy City Assessor Rebecca Monquist to present the report.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Welcome, Ms. Monquist.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members. Thank you for allowing me to spend some time with you this afternoon to share with you the outcome of the 2019 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization report. So I'm first going to start with an overview of some process and procedures and just some reminders. As is true with the majority of the work in our office, everything that we do is really dictated by statute and/or rules governed by the Department of Revenue. Whether it's the fact that notices have to be mailed within 10 days of the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization convening, or that the local Board must adjourn 20 days after they start unless we're granted an extension, everything is really guided by statute, and there's not a lot of wiggle room for us to make any changes to the process. We are very grateful to our partnership with the City Clerk's Office, primarily Casey and Jackie and Sue who are here with us today. We really couldn't do it without them. There are a lot of moving parts as we work through the local Board. We never know truly how many meetings we're going to have. Is it going to be one? Is it going to be five or six? And we're really grateful to them to make sure that they're there and present and that our meetings are professional and accessible to the public. Casey did touch on a few of the process improvements, and I just want to highlight them again. One of them this year that we, first time, is that we use the LIM system, and we had our agendas and all the supporting documentations in LIMs for greater transparency and access. And we also have been year after year trying to find the best way and space for our meetings. We never know how many people are going to join us at those meetings. It's a confusing process for many, and people do not know if they need to show up or if they, when they need to show up, so we never know who's going to be with us. So this year, we did use the space across the hall, and we had a staging area, and it worked quite well, so that people had a space to meet with our team across the hall and then go into 319 for the actual hearing. And then, as far as the preparation leading up to the local Board, in March, you approved the members of the local Board, and this year, we had several new members. And I will tell you, the members of the local Board this year, again, were outstanding. Many, many years of experience and levels of experience. They brought a true passion to serve the city and the community, and it really showed and it was obvious to all that were involved. You approved seven members, however, only six were present, but six were, almost all six were present at all times. And so that was really great to see. They were very engaged. You also established then the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization, and in Minneapolis here, we have a special Board of Equalization in that you appoint a special Board. You do not serve as the local Board of Appeal and Equalization, and you are just one of a few cities throughout the metro that actually has a special Board. Then, Patrick and I presented to you in March the 2019 assessment report, and this was the first time we'd ever done that, and we look forward to doing that year after year to provide to you what we've done with the assessments, so you have that information for your constituents leading up to the mailing of the notices. We presented that to the Ways and Means Committee this year, and then we were able to have some one-on-one conversations, ward-specific with some of you, to provide some more ward-specific data. Following that, we mailed the 2019 value notices, and it's just a good reminder for people always that those notices represented the market values as of January 2, 2019, for taxes payable in 2020. This was another process improvement this year, and this was in coordination with the IT collaboration team, so kudos to them. They were very, very helpful and easy to work with. We were leveraging the same platform that the 4D application is on, so this was a new online application to the local Board of Appeal and Equalization, and you could use it on your computer. It worked beautifully on a mobile device. And this is an administrative tool that we use to collect information about those wishing to appeal. We collect information about why they feel that their market value is incorrect. We collect supporting documentation so they can attach supporting information, and if it's a rental property, they can provide confidential information that way for us. And then it feeds into a database for us, and amazingly so. There are so many ways throughout my presentation today that are reminders to me that we need to express our gratitude to all of you for the funding for our new CAMA system that we're moving forward into. And this is just one of those examples. Our new CAMA system will have an e-file option that will eventually take the place of this, but we were actually able to make it work and have an online application that was somewhat able to feed into our archaic current CAMA system and save a little bit of data entry. So this was a really useful tool, and we got really good feedback from our appellants. So we, this is the usage of the online application this year, and so you'll see that the great majority of our applicants did choose to use this. It was about 66% of our applicants. And that's skewed a little bit because at the convening of our Board meeting on April 23rd, we did take the online application down, just as an administrative tool, as a workflow tool, and everybody that appealed after that appealed via email. So it is skewed slightly. But we will continue to use that tool next year and probably refine it a little bit. I next want to talk about the timeline. I don't know if you remember, but last year, when we presented to you this chart, it was a very, a very large spike right when the Board convened, by about a few hundred applications. And I want to explain the change in process. Over history, we had traditionally had an appeal deadline, and that was pretty common across the state jurisdictions had an appeal deadline. And in Minneapolis, the appeal deadline was typically seven to 10 days before the Board would have convened, so it would have been about 10 days before April 23rd. And we would have made it clear to everybody that appealed after that that their cases would have then been heard by the county Board versus the local Board of Equalization. Our staff continued to work on the appeals and inspect the properties, but they would have been heard at the county Board level should they have needed a hearing. Well, the state has made it very clear to the entire state, all jurisdictions, that deadlines are inappropriate. Because of the open meeting law, we can't have deadlines. So we continued to accept applications all the way up through when the Board adjourned on May 14th. So we did see a spike in applications on April 23rd, and that was about 150 applications, if I remember correctly. And then after that, we saw about an average of 14 applications a day. So while we were still working on the files and presenting cases to the local Board, applications still continued to come in until the Board did adjourn on April 24th. I just wanted to point that out because it is different process than we've had in the past. And this is a history of our appeals, which Mr. Carl did mention. This year, we had 1,766 appeals. Last year, we had 1,400, and there was quite a bit of media about our 1,400, and we didn't hear quite as much this year about the 1,766. But it definitely has challenged our staff capacities. This is the slide that's probably of interest to you, and this is our appeals by Ward. At the end of this meeting, later this afternoon or early tomorrow, we will be sending out your lists of appeals by Ward for all of you. We've been doing that the past few years, and we will provide that to you. We haven't been able to get it ready for you yet because we've been doing a bunch of data cleanup to make sure it's accurate. So it's almost ready, and so we will get that out and send out to you. This is a heat map that we started doing last year as well to show you where the majority of the appeals have come from. I would point out that in certain areas, like in Ward 3, you'll see we have had a spike in some of the condominium complexes, appeals in there, and so that's why you'll see concentration in certain areas there. If we break down our appeals...
Excuse me, Ms. Monquist.
Yes.
Are the appeals directly related to the property value increases? Because I was, I was under the impression that Wards 4 and 5 had some more significant increases this past year, and yet the appeals are coming from everywhere but in those areas. So I'm just curious, what's the relationship?
Yes, Chair Jenkins, that is correct. So if you remember, we did present to you at the assessment report the value changes by community and Ward. And if I remember correctly, down in Ward 13, the increases were about 2.75%, and up in Wards 4 and 5, you'll remember seeing double-digit increases. However, the, you'll see the inverse when you see the appeal count. And in a few slides, we will show you some of the proactive outreach we did though into the northern communities, notifying them about their options to appeal because we were worried that we may not see people taking advantage of their appeal options.
Thank you.
This is just a pie chart quickly of the breakdown by property type, and this is pretty common, that you will, you would expect that most of our appeals will come from our residential properties. Most of our commercial and apartment properties traditionally will appeal through the Minnesota State Tax Court. However, we did see a spike in apartment appeals this year at the local level. And this is the result of all of the inquiry...
Excuse me, Ms. Monquist, Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I know the answer, but can you just confirm that the map showed appeals of all property types, residential, commercial, industrial, and apartment?
On the heat map?
Yeah. Yes. Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Carl mentioned that we had seen over 5,000 inquiries, or received over 5,000 market value inquiries and classification inquiries this year, and this is a breakdown of those inquiries because I think it's always important to remember that even though you'll see that we've received 1,766 appeals, that when you actually start at how many people first contacted us, the appeal count is much less than those people that initially reached out to us. So we, those that were resolved, that big blue piece of the pie chart, the 3,581, those were the ones that were resolved with no official application or change in valuation. Those are the people that would contact us via email or phone call. Our appraisal staff or another member of staff would talk to them. They may share some comparable sales with them. They may share their market data with them, and then those callers would choose not to appeal their value. So those, what we consider kind of an informal review or just an inquiry. The 697 are those properties that we can have, that were concurred with our staff, that the staff inspected the property, did a review of the property, and recommended a property reduction or value reduction, and the property owner agreed. And so that's what we would call a concurrence. There are 130 cancels there, and I actually included sustains in with the cancels, and those are different from our perspective. A cancellation is somebody that just says, they just decide to stop the process. A sustain is where they say, you know what, I ended up agreeing with you after you reviewed the value. We had only 17 properties this year that were heard by the local Board. There are 910 cases at the conclusion of the local Board that are still being worked through the county Board process, but again, our staff still handle those. We had a handful, six that were unable to schedule, and then six at that point in time that were being prepared for the county Board of Equalization as far as a hearing. And then if we start from the very beginning, we mail about 125,000 value notices at the beginning of the year, or in March, excuse me. And then that generated the 5,347 informal reviews or inquiries that that total pie chart represented. We received 1,766 formal appeal applications. And on the left, you'll see there are 916 open cases working through the process, and then 850 resolved at that point in time. This is the action that the local Board took. This was in the RCA that you saw. At the top, that represents the total, the 17 that they heard, representing a 2.28% decrease. They sustained 11 properties, and then they reduced six properties. And then, at that point in time, 697 concurrences, which was a 12.39% reduction. And I list those as far as Board action because, again, in statute, if we are not able to notify property owners 10 days before the local Board convenes about a change to their valuation, the local Board actually has to take action on that. And what that means is that we stand before the Board and we read them their property ID number, we read them their original value and their new value, and one by one, and the Board has to agree on it. And bless it, I guess. And so if then we take those cases that are open, because I just wanted to be transparent and let you know what's going on with those open cases still, because we still have several cases that are working through the process just because of the volume of cases that we had this year. So before, I believe I had showed you that there were like 916, but because all 1,766 applications are still eligible, we had some people add on and just change their mind and want to come back and go back to the county Board. So we have 940 open cases right now. Or we did, I'm sorry. We've concurred 466 of those, canceled the 14, and sustained the value of 54. We have one refused entry, 26 unable to schedule. I'm sorry, I keep stepping away from the microphone. We have 18 that we're preparing Board cases for right now, and 361 are open. Those numbers are constantly in flux. That was of this morning when I cut the data. So this is some of that proactive communication that I mentioned earlier. We've been really working with communications to get the word out about their options to appeal. There was a news release that went out to community media, including neighborhood and cultural newspapers. We provided stories for your Ward newsletters. We've been leveraging social media. We internally have our own communications plan, and then we work with communications to send out our social media blasts. We did do Story Pitch to North News, and there was a radio underwriting spot that we produced for KMOJ for on-air play. I just want to remind everybody about the next step in appeal options. Casey did mention this. The next step for, is the county Board level, and that convenes June 17th. Those are the options for contacting the county. The preferred method is the email method. They can call, however. The county Board will convene on the 17th, however, the Minneapolis hearings will likely occur at the end of that week and at the end of the following week. By statute, the county Board has to convene by June 30th. And then, if people are still unhappy with their value or if they've missed all the filing dates, they can appeal to the Minnesota State Tax Court, and they have until April 30th of next year. Looking to 2020 and beyond, so we know that because of the increasing appeal counts as far as, and the uncertainty of the appetite for appeals for next year, we really, truly as a team, we didn't think that we would see more appeals than we saw last year. So we aren't sure what to think about next year. So we have decided that we are going to go back to the drawing board and make some decisions about the best way to handle appeals, whether it's going to go back to how we intake appeals, how we process appeals, and how the Board processes their appeals. So we're working with the City Clerk's Office, our appraisal team, and the Board members themselves to get some feedback so that we can find better ways, faster ways, more efficient ways to process these appeals because we are beyond capacity at this point in time. March through, right now, we are $30,000 into unbudgeted overtime, just so that we can process these appeals, and we still have over 300 to go, as I mentioned. Due to the large number of appeals, we are at least one month behind in the next cycle of our year, and that cycle is the quintile revaluation where our appraisers are out in the field doing that 20%, knocking on doors and collecting the physical characteristics, going neighborhood by neighborhood. They'll begin that work immediately following the county Board, or if they don't have a county Board case, hopefully they'll be on the field before that. But we will be behind schedule on that as well, so we're going to have to make up some time there. And then last but not least, I just want to thank our staff. They've put in many, many hours of overtime, and typically, like I said, most of these cases come from the residential side. We've pulled in our commercial team. They've, we've had some illnesses in the office. We've had many strange things come up this year where we have to shift things around, and they've been flexible and adaptable and provided excellent, excellent customer service. It's been so delightful to get, we got one from Ward, your office yesterday, 11 yesterday. Just, it's so great for our appraisers to get positive feedback about their customer service that they're providing. It's always a difficult position to be in, to have to give people bad news or maybe not the exact value that they were hoping for, but to know that they're doing it in a professional, professional manner is, is really great. And so I just thank the staff. We really, truly have the best here.
Well, thank you, Ms. Monquist, for that presentation. Are there any questions or discussion at all? Councilmember Fletcher?
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins, and thank you for this. I'm wondering, because I want to lift up the point that Vice President Jenkins made about the north side and, I guess, some areas where we saw higher increases represented in these appeals. Did we do a heat map of the inquiries? I guess I'm curious if those homeowners made inquiries but didn't follow through with the appeal, or felt discouraged in that process in some way, or felt like they got their questions answered in some way that other residents didn't, or if they never made initial contact?
Chair Jenkins and Councilmember Fletcher, we did do a heat map of the inquiries as well, the 5,000 number, and it isn't much different than the actual appeals, but I'm happy to share that with you so that you can see it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will note that you do have a motion in front of you to amend the Board's report to include the listed properties, and if there are no objections, I will go ahead and move... And if there are no objections, I will go ahead and move approval of item number one, as listed on the agenda, and in addition to this motion to amend. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. And that item carries. And just before we move on, I want to just be sure to formally express my thanks to Mr. Todd, Ms. Monkis, and the professional team in the City Assessors Office. Thank you very much, as well as Clerk Jackie Hansen and Sue Inquinto from the Clerk's Office. They have made this year's local board the smoothest and most efficient process here at the city. And also extend sincere thanks to the board members, Patricia Werner, Jeff Larson, Paul Crawford, Michael Tinker, Neil Anderson, and Fay Bland. They did excellent work on behalf of all the residents of the city of Minneapolis. So thank you all. And we will now move to receive reports from the standing committees on matters to be considered by the full council at our regular meeting this coming Friday. We'll begin with the Budget Committee, Chair Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We don't have anything to take official action on this coming Friday in our Budget Committee. We have continued to hear, and we have all but two, I believe, departments to go in terms of their departmental performance results metrics. Starting next Monday, those of you with home committees, who are home committee chairs, will begin meeting with the mayor's office on the mayor's budget proposal development, and I would encourage all of my colleagues to take the information that we've learned from those results performance evaluations with them to those meetings. I think it would help us as we start that process. I've been getting a lot of feedback from department directors and from some of my colleagues on how results went this year, and I'll continue to take that feedback offline. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano. Are there any other, any questions? Seeing none, our next committee report is the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee and its chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We'll be bringing 12 items forward for approval on Friday. Item one is also a joint MCDAs operating committee item, so there will be an operating committee right after the council meeting, and this is passage of a resolution with regard to a bond issuance for the Minnesota Transition Charter School facility. That's at 252627 Avenue South. That's kind of a cool address, don't you think? 252627? Oh, I kind of like it. Item number two are approving an application for Crave. Item three is an application for Broken Clock Boom. Item four is an application for APOY. Item five is a liquor application for Kaiachi. Items six are the liquor license approvals, and seven are the renewals. Eight are the gambling license approvals. Item nine is business license operating conditions for Race or Kitchen. Item 10 is a contract amendment with APOY Milwaukee. And item 11 is a rental license reinstatement. Item 12 is perhaps the largest item on our agenda in terms of both historic importance and overall notice, and that is authorizing a Great Streets grant to PCYC to complete the almost final financing to get the Capri Theater expansion in the ground this year. And SEEPAD staff have done incredible work to get to this point, and we're really excited that that's going to happen. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions on any of the items, one through 12.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Are there any comments or questions? I will note that many, many moons ago, I worked for PCYC, and they started this process, and it's really gratifying to see it finally coming, this last step closer to realization.
I'm glad you said that, Council Vice President, because we talked about in committee, the first action on this item was about 15 years ago.
Yes. Congratulations, Councilmember Allison. So the next committee report is the Housing Policy and Development Committee. That chair is Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward seven items for consideration. The first item is approving the 2019 Consolidated Plan Action Plan, and I will be moving that with an amendment that came from the Ways and Means Committee having to do with some, an increase in the anticipated funding that came from the federal government. Second item is passage of a resolution approving our Housing Replacement District Four Tax Increment Financing Plan. The third item is extending exclusive development rights for snelling yards. The fourth item is authorizing an agreement with Towerside Innovation District to implement part of our Metropolitan Communities Livable, sorry, Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Demonstration Account Grants. Fifth item is approving the Minneapolis Homes Development Assistant Round Four Guidelines, including funding for a passive housing project. Sixth item is authorizing issuance of an RFP for our Housing Opportunities for Person with AIDS program. And the seventh item is approving a missing middle housing pilot program. Happy to stand for questions on any of those items.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions? Any questions? Seeing none, the next committee report is the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee. And in light of the absence of that committee's chair, we will hear again from Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. Happy to give the report on the six items. It'll be coming forward from the Public Health, Environment, and Civil Rights and Engagement Committee. First item is approving appointments to the South Side Green Zone Council. Second item is approving appointments to the Transgender Equity Council. Third item is authorizing an extension to a contract with Bridge Healthcare Partners for our school-based clinic program. Fourth item is authorizing contracts with Mad Dads, Hennepin Theater Trust, St. Stephen's Human Services, and Green Minneapolis for downtown prevention, violence prevention efforts. Fifth item is authorizing submittal of a grant to the Center for Prevention at Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And the sixth item is some staff directions related to progress report on the community-wide 100% renewable electric goals or blueprint. Happy to take questions on any of those items.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, the next committee report is the Transportation and Public Works Committee. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding 13 items. Item one is the temporary easement agreements with McNair Sanitary Reconstruction Projects. Items two and three are both reconstruction projects at the locations listed. Item four are allowing large block event permits for the events that are itemized. Item six and seven are two agreements with MINDOT for work that we will proceed with. Item eight is a highway turnback deed from the state of Minnesota for Trunk Highway 55. Item nine is a pedestrian street lighting corridor amendment to that lighting plan. There are several actions related to that. Item 10 is the bid for the 20, well, they're both, 10, 11, and 12 are both low bids for activities of the department. And item 13 is where we memorialize the 2019 Public Works Week. I'll stand for questions on any detailed matter.
Thank you, Chair Wright. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, the next committee report is the Ways and Means Committee. And in light of that committee's chair, being absent, we will hear from the vice chair, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Chair Jenkins. The Ways and Means Committee is bringing forward 10 items for consideration today. The first two are legal settlements. Item number three is authorizing the city to join an amicus brief defending the Affordable Care Act. Item number four is accepting a sole bid on painting for the public service building project. Items five through nine are adjustments to existing contracts, contract amendments for the public service building project. And item number 10 is gift acceptance from Field Regina Northrop Neighborhood Group for a public safety security camera. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, the next committee report is the Zoning and Planning Committee, given by its chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For this cycle, the committee report will be given by the vice chair, Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We had three items that we considered. The first two were moratorium waivers, and we proceeded to forward those for full council consideration. And then item three was the rezoning of the 2521 Bloomington Avenue address. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright, are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, our next and last committee report is the Executive Committee, and that will be given by the vice chair, Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items from the Executive Committee. The first is approving an increase in the salary schedule for the plumber's salary, for the plumber's bargaining unit. And the second is the appointment of the Director of Regulatory Services, which was nominated by the mayor, and that is interim Director Kim Keller, to consider that appointment and set a public hearing, which will take place at the EDRS Committee. And, you know, I'll note that there was some discussion in the Executive Committee. I did express some disappointment that no council members were part of this particular process, and therefore, no council members will be able to speak to the, you know, to the candidates that were considered through this process. So I did ask the mayor to hopefully follow up with council members, and I know those of you who may have questions about the process will be able to reach out to the mayor as
Thank you, Council President Bender, for that report and for sharing the discussion that ensued. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, there is no further business before this committee, and with that, we are adjourned.